Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education regularly scheduled business meeting for Tuesday, November 12, 2013. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And our first order of business tonight is we lost another student, as most of you know. On November 6 of this year, we lost Jocelyn Brianna Johnson, a student at Cox Mill Elementary, Cox Mill High School. And would all of you join me just for a moment of silence, please? You know, it's sad when we lose students, you know, for whatever reason, for that matter goes, but, you know, when there's a death, you know, it seemed like we've had a lot of that here lately. I think this is probably the fourth, maybe the fifth student that we've lost in the last couple of months. And it's heart-wrenching. Okay, our next thing is our opening ceremony tonight. We're privileged to have with us the ROTC unit from Northwest Cabarrus High School. And the Air Force cadets that are participating in that will be Cadet Captain Tyler Vaughn, Cadet First Lieutenant Jordan Barnes, Cadet First Lieutenant Chris Turner, Cadet Second Lieutenant Matthew Luke, and Cadet Staff Sergeant Katie Haas. These cadets are being led tonight by Lieutenant Calvin Martin, United States Air Force retired, and Senior Master Sergeant Corinne Smith, United States Air Force retired. Also, you notice these young people up front here. This is a brass ensemble from Hickory Ridge High School, and they're under the direction of Mr. Chris White, and they're going to perform their Star Spangled Banner for us tonight. Nick Ward will be playing the trumpet. Jonathan Kitchens is playing the trumpet. Benjamin Thomas playing the French horn. Rene Hendricks the euphorium. And Amelia Dunn euphorium. And Billy Romero de tuba. So if you will, will you all stand with me as we observe the opening ceremony?
All are hold. Left face. Right hand, hold. Harry, hold.
I'll tell you, that was really great. I appreciate all the support that everyone gives us to conduct that ceremony, the first of ever business meeting there. Okay, we're going to move on with the agenda. They got all their stuff done up front here, so we can move on. The first item here is the setting of the agenda. Board members, we've had the agenda, we've worked on it, we've talked about it, and all that, so do I have a motion that the agenda be approved as presented?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Harrison makes the motion. Mr. Walter seconds it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is set. Okay, we'll move on into our recognition section. And this is where Ms., well, she'll be going second. This is where Dr. Shepherd and I will do the North Carolina School Board Association Business and Nonprofit Honor Roll. And so, Dr. Shepherd, if you'll join me at the podium down there, we want to make this presentation. It's very rare that I'm down here on this end, but anyway, a few months ago, the North Carolina School Board Association announced that it was accepting nominees for the North Carolina School Board Association Business and Nonprofit Honor Roll. And I remember when I first received that letter from the North Carolina School Board, just like that, the first thing come into my mind was Concord Printing. And I just thought about how, you know, much Ben Palmer and the Concord Printing folks have done, how much they've done for Cabarrus County Schools in the last, almost soon be two years. But when I first approached Ben Palmer about this, we were at a restaurant eating one night, and I just went up to Ben and told him about it, and just about like that, again, he said, "Have Ms. Boone call me." And so, he jumped right on the opportunity to do that. Concord Printing has been a sponsor for the Impact Through Education Awards, which we present at each of our business meetings throughout the school year for the past almost two years. When we reached out to them about sponsoring the award, they didn't hesitate to say yes. We are grateful for their continued support and are pleased to recognize them with this certificate. So Ben, I'd like for you, if you will, Ben Palmer, to come forward, and we want to make this presentation to you. I know I seen you come slipping in. sure, you know, that they're rewarded in a way that we can't really put a value on by participating. And I thank them so much, Ben, once again, thank you. And, okay, let's move along now to the Impact Through Education Awards, and this is where Ms. Boone will come to the podium, and she'll recognize, we've got two schools tonight that we'll be recognizing, and so, Ms. Boone, when you get here, we're waiting on you.
Good evening. Tonight, we will recognize students and staff members for the Impact Through Education Awards, which, as we just mentioned, are sponsored by Concord Printing, students and staff at Beverly Hills Elementary, and also at JM Robinson High School. We'll begin with Beverly Hills Elementary School, and I would like to invite any members of that school's administrative team to please come forward, so that you can stand with your Our first honoree from Beverly Hills Elementary is Mary Margaret Ferguson. Would Mary Margaret and her family please come forward? Mary Margaret is a busy 5th grader at Beverly Hills Elementary School. She's a member of the Student Wellness Action Team, also known as SWAT, the Battle of the Books Team, the Fire Safety Bowl Team, and the Newspaper Club. Outside of school, Mary Margaret's favorite thing to do is dance. Mary Margaret exemplifies the school values of being responsible, respectful, and safe. Congratulations, Mary Margaret. You are an Impact Through Education Award recipient for Beverly Hills Elementary School. Would Carly and her family please come forward? Carly is also a 5th grader at Beverly Hills Elementary School, and she is an active member of the Newspaper Club, the Student Wellness Action Team, and the Fire Safety Bowl Team. Outside of school, she also loves to participate in dance. She has three older brothers, all of whom are current or former Cabarrus County Schools students. Carly takes the Beverly Hills values of responsibility, respect, and safety to heart. We congratulate you, Carly, on being a recipient of the Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations. Would Mrs. Schu and her family please come forward? Amy Schu is a product of Cabarrus County Schools and a former North Carolina Teaching Fellow who attended UNC Charlotte. This is her 17th year at Beverly Hills Elementary, where she teaches 5th grade math. She is a member of the School Improvement Team, the AIG Team, and the Lead Mentor. Her husband, Donnie, is also a CCS alumnus. She has two children, Cynthia, who attends J.N. Freeze in the IB program, and Jason, who attends Beverly Hills Elementary. Mrs. Schu is dedicated to doing whatever it takes to ensure that the students at Beverly Hills Elementary School are successful. Congratulations, Mrs. Schu, and thank you for making an impact at Beverly Hills. Would Mrs. Wilson and her family please come forward? Mrs. Wilson is currently in her 27th year as a teacher assistant for Cabarrus County Schools. She has been at Beverly Hills the entire time. She's been assigned to kindergarten and first grade classrooms during her time at Beverly Hills, but has worked in small groups and with individual students in all grade levels. She currently spends most of her time with kindergarten children, but also teaches a direct instruction group in first grade. Mrs. Wilson is an active member within the school and the community. She currently serves as a representative on the district's Teacher Assistant Advisory Panel. Mrs. Wilson is a cornerstone of Beverly Hills Elementary School, always willing to support students and her colleagues. Mrs. Wilson, we congratulate you and thank you for making an impact through education. Next, we will recognize students and staff at JM Robinson High School, and I'd like to invite any members of that school's administrative team to please come forward. Our first honoree from JM Robinson is Marian Mendoza Reyes. Would Marian and her family please come forward? Marian is an excellent candidate for the Impact Through Education Award. She's been very involved with the Multicultural Club at Robinson, volunteering at multiple events, and eager to welcome everyone. This year, she is one of the club's vice presidents. Marian is a very friendly girl who has never met a stranger. Along with her inviting smile, she loves to help others in any way that she can. She's a great advocate for her community, proud to use her bilingual skills to help Spanish speakers in need, whether it be at work or at school. Marian has pushed herself academically to fulfill her potential. She realized early on that her future was in her own hands, and was determined to make a change that would put her on a path to success. She has done just that, and hopes to continue on to college upon graduation, followed by medical school in the future. Congratulations, Marian. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for JM Robinson High School. Keishon is a pleasure to meet, and even more so, to get to know. He is the absolute embodiment of initiative, hard work, and respect for others that the Impact Through Education Award recognizes. He is genuine, kind, and has a quick sense of humor that makes him a joy to be around. Keishon excels in the highest academics at JM Robinson, while balancing a rigorous extracurricular schedule and a part-time job. Even with all of these time commitments on his plate, there is never an opportunity that he is not willing to let pass him by. He's always willing to try new things, including the high diving team for the Mecklenburg County Aquatics Club. Keishon is a member, has been a member of the marching band for the past three years, four if you include being a part of the marching band while he was in the 8th grade. This year, he made the difficult decision to try something new, and began his stint with student government. He has blossomed in the leadership program, and although he reflects back fondly on his time with the marching band, he is thrilled to be able to stretch himself to include this new experience. One thing that always stands out about Keishon, and it resonates in his very presence, is his faith in God. If Keishon is not at school or working, he devotes a huge portion of his time to his church family. He uses his musicality in the church band, where he is the head drummer. Keishon's hard work, initiative, and respect for other people are certain to make him successful in his future endeavors. Congratulations, Keishon. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Robinson. And I know that Ms. Browning could not be here this evening, so I would like to still read her bio, and I will present Mr. Hall with her award. Mandalyn Browning represents the best of her profession. She received her undergraduate degree in Integrated Social Studies Education, her master's degree in school administration, and is currently working on her doctorate in curriculum and instruction. During her nine years of teaching, Ms. Browning has taught US history, world history, civics, and AP world history. She is a dynamic instructor who is able to establish great relationships with all of her students. In the classroom, Ms. Browning challenges her students with probing questions and engages even the most disinterested students in topics which probably aren't interesting to the majority of people. Ms. Browning makes history and government fascinating. In addition to being a stellar teacher, she is a proactive advocate for students. She is the creator and director of the current student mentor program. Also, the program director, as the program director, excuse me. As the program director, Ms. Browning matches students with adult teacher mentors, plans the curriculum for the program, and hosts events to celebrate the accomplishments of the students. Ms. Browning's students describe her as intelligent, funny, helpful, and caring, and everyone describes her as awesome. So we congratulate Ms. Browning, and we will give her award to Mr. Hall. And our final honoree from JM Robinson High School this evening is Ms. Debbie Knowles. Would Ms. Knowles and her family please come forward? She's not here either? Okay. Well, I'll tell you a little bit about Ms. Knowles. Debbie Knowles has been the Child Nutrition Manager at JM Robinson for the past 10 years. Prior to working for Cabarrus County, Ms. Knowles was a catering manager for 16 years, and also worked as a hairdresser for 12 years. When asked about Ms. Knowles as the cafeteria manager, Mr. Hall said, "It is truly astonishing how well Ms. Knowles leads her team. The customer service our students receive from the cafeteria staff is the best I've ever seen. As the principal, probably the best thing I can say about our cafeteria is that I never have to think about it unless I want to buy a hamburger. I know Debbie's got everything under control. Ms. Knowles makes sure her students are taken care of, that they never go without, and that they are treated with respect and kindness, even if they don't show the same to the staff, to her and the staff. Ms. Knowles leads by example. She asks nothing from her team that she isn't willing to do herself. She gives great advice, is an expert at working with teenagers, and, as Mr. Hall said, the most fiscally responsible manager on the planet. It is crazy how she can make the entire student body happy, and at the end of the year, have next to no outstanding charges that the school has to pick up. She needs to turn that apron around and wear it as a cape. She is my hero." We congratulate Ms. Knowles, and we will also present her plaque to Mr. Hall.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for all those, you know, everybody being here. And our next award here is, Ms. Ronnie Boone's already there, this is the North Carolina Employer Support of the Guard and Reserves Award, and I think you're going to be joined by Ms. Pat Foulter, if she's here.
That's correct. I would like to introduce Ms. Pat Foulter, and as she's coming forward. I want to just introduce her to everyone. Ms. Foulter is a North Carolina Employer Support Specialist with the National Guard, and a representative for the Military Personnel Services Corporation. Ms. Foulter is joining us this evening to make three very special presentations to Cabarrus County Schools employees. So without any further ado, I will turn the microphone over to Ms. Foulter.
Thank you. Good evening. I work with the North Carolina Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve. And to give you just a little bit of background about our organization, we were formed by the Department of Defense in 1972, when it was determined that we would become an all-volunteer military. And since that time, the organization does a lot of military outreach work. We do employer outreach. We work with, we have embezzment across the state that work with conflict resolution between employers and service members, if there are issues when they're deployed. And the two very important things we do is we have an awards program, which is the reason we're here tonight, to present a couple of awards. And we also do a lot of work to find employment for our service members, our Guard and Reserve members. And so, we are fortunate tonight to have with us the nominator of these awards, which is Sergeant, Staff Sergeant James Mayberry. And if you would come forward, please. I actually would like for you to present the awards to the people that you nominated, and then I will call them up, if that's okay?
Great.
Okay. The first one is for Kevin Fox. The next one is for Susan Owens. And for Dr. Barry Shepherd. I did not read what was written for each one of you, but I thought I would like to summarize that I do a lot of these awards across our state. To find people that were involved in hiring someone in a situation when they were out of the country, in Egypt, no face-to-face interviews, and basically did it over the phone, and showed the trust that you have, and the loyalty, and the, just the opportunity you gave a person in that situation speaks volumes about what you are and who you are. And I just thank you so much, and appreciate what you've done here, and for your service to our young people, which is one of the things that was said in the information, that James nominated the people for the award for the service that's done for the youth of America and our country, and I thought that just said volumes. So thank you very much. So thank you very much.
Well, that concludes our recognitions portion of the meeting tonight. So those of you that have been recognized, once again, congratulations. And I did want to say one more thing, you know, as these students came by, you know, and the staff as well, you know, there's always several folks behind them. You notice the parents and the grandparents and the husbands and the wives. I thank you too for your support because they didn't get there by themselves. So I just want you to know, I appreciate that. So those of you that have already got everything that you're supposed to get, you obviously can stay long as you want to, but if you'd like to ease up and slip on out now, it'd be a good time because we're going to go ahead and proceed with our, with our normal business meeting. So once again, thank you all for being here, and congratulations again. Okay, board members, we're going to move on now to the rest of the agenda, and the next item is the approval of the minutes. You've had a chance to read over and study the minutes, and are there any corrections or changes that have not been noted already?
Mr. Chairman, did the correction that you mentioned earlier, has that, was that fixed?
Ms. Monroe, I'm sure she took care of it. So, okay, do I have a motion that the minutes be approved as presented?
Second.
Okay, have motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on into the report section here, and this is where the board chair has a chance to make a few comments. Don't have really a lot important to say tonight. However, I did want to say that for the last soon-be-two years, it has been my privilege and great honor to have served this Board of Education as your chairman. And as you know, according to general statutes and board policy, the first meeting in December, the board nominates and reelects new leadership. So this will be my last official meeting as chair. And I just wanted to thank the, you know, my board members. We've got such a wonderful board. The county should be so proud of these members. Four of them came on new this year, and they have progressed at a, at a very rapid pace. And, I mean, I'm just so proud of our board right now. And thank you, Cabarrus County, for giving me the opportunity to, to have served you. And I hope that my serving you has been worthy of your support for all these years. But I do thank you so very much, and so, but I've still got more time to be around here. So, you know, we're going to move right on to bigger and better things, and we'll start off with the new leadership in December, and, and we'll continue to move forward. And I think at this time, Dr. Shepherd has some comments. He always writes his down, and I never write my stuff down. I just go for it, you know, but he always writes his down. So, Dr. Shepherd, it's your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just want to begin tonight by sharing some exciting news. We were notified this past Friday that the Cabarrus County Schools was selected to receive an I-III grant offered by the federal government to support innovative educational programs. Now, this was not just any grant. This was a grant valued at $3 million, and the largest one that our district has won since I've been with you. And I want to thank Jason Van Huclem and his staff for the hard work on this proposal. One of the stipulations, though, of the grant is for a portion to be matched by private funding, so we're in the process now of working with our community partners to meet that requirement. I also want to congratulate Northwest Cabarrus High School. That school received a $65,000 Champions Grant from the Jimmy Johnson Foundation for repairs and improvements to its track. So I also want to offer my congratulations to Jennifer Bradford, a teacher at Mount Pleasant Elementary School, who has been named the Richard L. Thompson Honored Educator Scholar by the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching, or NCAT as we call it. Ms. Bradford will attend an NCAT seminar in December that focuses on early education literacy instruction. The Thompson Scholarship honors the lifelong dedication of Dr. Richard Thompson, a former North Carolina and a former Cabarrus County Schools educator, to the profession of teaching and education. Also, this week, we'll take the time to recognize the contributions of our school psychologists and the contributions they make to our schools and our children. Our psychologist here in Cabarrus County Schools serves students in grades pre-kindergarten through 12 and works closely with the educators in each school. We appreciate all the work that our school psychologists do to help children succeed academically, socially, behaviorally, and emotionally, and thank them for their dedication. Also, we'll celebrate American Education Week, November the 18th through November the 22nd. And Cabarrus County Schools will begin our observance a little early by hosting community walk-ins throughout our schools. The walk-ins will begin this Thursday, November 14th, and will continue through the following week. This is an excellent opportunity for our schools to showcase all of the great work that's going on in Cabarrus County Schools. If you're interested in visiting one of our schools during the walk-ins, please contact the schools directly to register. And last, I want to announce that we held the inaugural meeting of the Superintendent's Presidents' Club last week, and we're pleased to report that we had strong representation on the part of presidents from our PTAs, PTOs, and booster clubs all across our district. We're looking forward to mobilizing this group of recognized school community leaders, harnessing their creative energy to address current issues and challenges facing our Cabarrus County Schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. It's always good to hear your remarks and comments because they're always very timely. Okay, the next portion of our agenda tonight is for our guest speaker section, and according to the agenda, we don't have anyone that signed up to speak to us tonight. So since that's the case, we can move right on into the action portion of the business meeting. The first item is the Spanish immersion expansion at Carl A. Fur Elementary School, and we've got Dr. Tara Nitrass. Wait a minute, hold on, did I skip something? Yeah, I did. I skipped a big thing here, but Tara, you just hang on a minute, we'll get to you. The, the next item here is the approval of the consent agenda, and these are the items that we discussed last week in our work session, and they've tentatively been approved, but we need to get it officially approved now. So at this time, do I have a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented?
So moved.
And second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved as presented. And that's why it's good to have a board, you know, because I need somebody to help keep me straight, you know, so, and they're good about letting me know when I mess up. So, but anyway, now we can go on to Dr. Nitrass, and you can tell us about the Spanish immersion. And also, if you remember, board, you know, we discussed this last week, and there were a couple of board members that wanted it put on the action agenda. I hope that you've got your answers or concerns all ironed out. But anyway, Ms. Nitrass is here to help us get through this, and so when you get ready, we're ready.
Great. So, good evening. As you've said, Dr. Van Huclem presented this information last week and wanted to be here this evening but is unable to do so. So he did present the proposal to designate Fur as an open enrollment school in order to meet the demand for Spanish immersion within our county. So it is our recommendation that the proposed Spanish immersion expansion at Fur be approved as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Nitrass, for coming here and being with us tonight. Now, board, as I said earlier, you know, we've already discussed this one time, but I want to give the board an opportunity to get any other concerns that you have cleared up because this is an item that we'll be voting on whenever we finish our discussion. So we'll start on Dr. Phillips' side. If you want to have any questions, concerns, if there's no comments or whatever, we just move on down.
Well, I know that one of the concerns that several of us expressed was that it's so early in the first year of the program that we really don't have any firm data on its success. When would we have to wait until we could get that type of comparison of, let's say, the immersion classes versus the non-immersion classes in kindergarten?
I would like for us to wait a year until we have that data so we have the firm data. What we do have right now are a couple of key pieces that I think are important. One is the data from the state and other splash immersion programs. As you've seen with our achievement data, we have exceeded the state average in most areas, so we would expect the same thing with the splash immersion data. So I would like for us to have more, but in order for us to move forward with this, we need to have approval now so we can be looking at teachers and having staff and expanding the program. I think one of the pieces with this that's important to remember is that parents have the opportunity to decide whether or not to get in the program. So while we want that concrete data, we want to have really good data to be able to come back to you. So as we continue with this, we will bring you the data as it's available. Right now, we have beginning-of-the-year data. We'll have some benchmarking data in January or February, and then we'll have our data at the end of the year.
Okay, Mr. Harrison.
What I like about programs like this is that it's a win-win. It's a good use of the county's resources, and at the same time, it brings about a level of choice and self-selection of parents, putting their children in those programs and therefore filling up the capacity of the schools. So again, thanks to yourself and Dr. Van Huclem for your work on this and other programs like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter.
Can you talk to us just a little bit more about this not being a magnet school, that we're not providing transportation?
So it will be an open enrollment school. So what we will do, because we had the demand within Fur for the Spanish immersion program this year, and we had 18 students on the waiting list and had to turn them away, what we'd like to be able to do is have enough spaces for the Fur families who are interested to enter the program, and then for any additional spaces we have, we would do an open enrollment where families can apply, just like they do for the magnets, and then we would have a lottery for those families to fill the number of spaces we have. But families will have to provide their own transportation.
It's still similar to a magnet program, but it's, they'd have to provide their own transportation.
Yes.
And again, I think if we've supported it last year, it does make a whole lot of sense to terminate it now. I think we need to continue to support the program and see how it turns out.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Kiger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. Tara, thank you very much for being here. I'd basically just say what I said last week, is we have a program. More people want to get in the program, so we're going to offer that, and we're going to open it up for other people to provide their own transportation if they want to be part of the program. I don't, that makes perfect sense to me. So thank you very much for, for being here, and we will look forward, as we mentioned also last week, to getting the data to make sure that we're on the path that we want to be on. But I'm absolutely confident that between yourself and Dr. Van Huclem that we're making the right decision.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Carpenter.
Well, excuse me. Well, you've got two programs here, and you're asking for two programs. One of them's going to cost you $45,000, which is the splash program. And I hate to combine both of them, but you've got two of them, and one of them's $275,000, one of them's $45,000. The splash program's $45,000. I've got a couple of concerns. One of them, we were promised data when we bought this program in, and we don't have data substantiating that the program's actually working. And that's one of my concerns. Secondly, we've gone, we're going to have some growth in that area. We've got building, we've got some apartment buildings coming into that area. We've got some other growth in that area. And now you're opening up that school, please excuse me, I've got a cold here. And so we're going to have that growth, and now you're opening that school up, and you're going to maybe possibly fill up those seats, and that concerns me. And we've already said this, this $45,000 is going to have to come from fund balance. So you're going to have to take that, and you're going to have to take the $275 out of fund balance also. So that's $310,000. Don't, where's the money coming from? Somebody tell me. Where's the money coming from?
The numbers that I'm looking for, for splash, I have $40,000, and the costs for that are coming from textbooks and Title III. I'll have to have Kelly speak to the IB program in terms of the funding and the fund balance for that.
I read in the paper, they said it was coming from fund balance. That's what I read in the paper. It was coming from fund balance.
Ms. Klutz, can you clarify that for us, please?
That's what I read in the paper. They said that the $275 was coming from fund balance.
Wasn't prepared to give a financial report tonight, but what I would tell you is what I know, that a portion, a small portion of, of that may have, we may have said that we'll need to take from fund balance the first year, but a lot of these are recurring costs that we can, so a teacher position would come from our allotment, and that would be something that you would continue to have. You would have that teaching position whether it was in this school or another school. You would serve an average of 25...
And you'd have to go into, it would have to go into expansion budget, so it would have to be reallocated, right?
No, ma'am, it wouldn't. No, we would have these 25 children in this class, or we would have these 25 children in another class. It would be just a normal operating expense.
But in the paper, it said it would have to come from fund balance, is what it said.
So I'll have to read the paper and see what was reported in the paper because, but I didn't say that it would come from fund balance.
Where's the money coming from to fund?
This would be a normal recurring expense for the classroom teacher.
Well, somebody tell me where the money's coming from.
Ms. Carpenter, I just explained that the classroom teacher would come from a normal operating expense. It would be a reoccurring expense, just like we, it would come from any other reoccurring expense. So if we're operating, we're taking care of these 25 children in this classroom, we would take care of these 25 children in classroom. We're just moving it from one classroom to another. It's not an additional expense, it's just a reallocation of the same teacher.
Well, those F.I., those special teachers have to be paid for. We don't...
It's not a special teacher, it's the same, same teaching position. You have one teaching position that's going to take care of 25 children.
Yeah, but those special teachers aren't. Those splash teachers are special teachers, and that $10,000 that's special, these are special things. We usually don't pay for those.
I can hire a splash teacher or a classroom teacher regardless, as a teacher.
They're in my class one day in splash, they're in Kelly's class the next day in regular. It's not an extra teacher. It's just a teacher that is, that we're hiring to teach the children just like they would in any other class. It's not an extra teacher.
And where, where are we, but we're going to add four classes, though. It said the cost of the program is $45,000, and that's why I'm wanting to know where that money's coming from.
It comes from a teacher allotment, just as we, if we're going to grow in our system and we're going to grow 25 children, we're going to grow one teacher. We're going to place one teacher in our school district. It's going to come out of the teacher allotment. And so what we will do is we'll place that teacher in this classroom. And if we choose not to place that teacher in this classroom, we're going to place that teacher in a different classroom. Doesn't matter if it's splash or if it's whatever else you want to call it. We're going to place a teacher in a classroom for 25 students.
Y'all, y'all've lost me. Why would we, then we can have that regular classroom. Why are we doing, then why are we doing it then? Why can't we just have a regular classroom?
I think the demand is there for the immersion program. So what we're looking at is trying to meet that demand for the immersion program.
For 18 children, you're saying?
That was from this year.
For $40,000, $40,000 you want to put?
Well, let's hold up here a minute. This is not a debate, this is a discussion. And the thing that we need to understand is that at Cabarrus County Schools, we have always tried to meet the need. And Carolyn, there's need for this additional four classes.
Well, when we had 347 or almost 400 kids wanting to go to a STEM program, yeah, I can see that. When we had that many children wanting to go to a STEM program, you could see that demand. That was, that was a demand, four, almost 400 kids wanting to go to a STEM program. Yeah, you can see that. That, you, no, wait a minute. It's my turn. You can see that, but when you see 18 children wanting to go, that's, that's a big difference. We can see that. But for 18 children to want to go to do some, and then you see growth in an area and you're wanting to see it, it doesn't make sense. You're wanting to put $45,000 into one program, that does not make good financial sense to do it. Now, that's, that's the point I'm trying to make. It does not make good financial sense to put $45,000 into 18 children. That is not a good choice. And I suppose it's, it's, it's time then to bring up this. I didn't want to bring this up until the IB program, but you have got...
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Carpenter, hang on a second. Let's, let's don't bring the IB up until it's time to have...
Well, I mean, but what, the point I'm wanting to make is we have got children not on grade level, and to me... not on grade level. And to me, that is more important than, we have got children right now, we've got forty-two percent of our children not reading on grade level. We, kindergarten, we have got fifty-point-five percent of our children in kindergarten not reading on grade level. To me, it's more important to have them reading on grade level. To me, that is more important. And we have got thirty-eight-point-five percent of our children not reading on grade level. To me, that is more important than that. I could go on down the list. I was going to bring this up when we start talking about the IB program. But to me, that is more important, to put money into that. It's more, a lot more important than that.
Well, first off, Carolyn, it's forty thousand. Regardless of what the paper said, it's forty thousand. That's what our chief financial officer has presented to us. The cost is forty thousand, number one. And number two, the majority of those students that are not at grade level on reading are the Spanish-speaking students, not the English-speaking students. And so you could easily expect it to be at a lower, you know, at a lower rate like that, because they're Spanish-speaking students, learning to speak, and, you know, what-
This is an average. This is not, this not lumping, this is the whole system, Mr. Chairman. This is not saying Spanish. This is the whole system. This is what we're, I'm not doing it for one, this is across the board. We're not, we're not doing that that way. This is across the whole board.
Okay. Dr. Shepherd, did you have a comment?
I would, I'm going to put Darren on the spot. Why don't you come here just a second? I want you to share. Darren Roberts is the principal of the school. And though we don't have hard data, I believe we could get some anecdotal data as to what you see on a daily basis when you're visiting those classrooms, and whether you think, as the leader of the school and the person that's responsible to me for the success of those children, if you believe this is a worthy investment of an allotment position that we're going to give to you. And I'm not putting you on the spot. Answer truthfully, okay? Just agree with me, and that's all that matters.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I also appreciate the fact that the board is considering this expansion. We do have forty-eight children that are involved in the program right now. And the data that I can point to is what I see when I go in the classroom, the energy, the enthusiasm from the children, from the teachers, the activities that they're involved in, the speed at which they have picked up the Spanish language, and I'm talking, of course, to the native English speakers here. Also, what we've seen in terms of the cultural impact, and the students from both cultures, how they're intermingling with each other, how they depend on one another. It's wonderful to see those native Spanish-speaking students become leaders when they're in the Spanish-speaking classroom. They're the ones that are pulling along the native English-speaking students. So those are wonderful anecdotal pieces of data that we have to look to. We don't have the hard data. We probably won't have hard data that we could point to until at least the end of this school year. But based on what other schools have seen that have done this, you really see the big impact in second and third grade, after the students have been a part of the program for two to three years. That's when they start to outperform their peers that are in traditional classrooms. So that's what we're looking for down the road. Also, just in speaking to the parents of the children in this program, we've heard nothing but wonderful things. I did have a couple of parents in the first two weeks of the school year who came to me, and they, they were a little concerned because their student wasn't particularly active in the Spanish classroom. They were worried, is my student going to perform? And I try to reassure them that based on the principal's comments from schools that have done this before, that's typical. Give it a few more weeks, let them get themselves settled, and they'll eventually start to be a part of the program, too. And that's been the case. And we've heard nothing but wonderful things since. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight, Darren, and speaking to this. And I wanted to just say one other thing, too. You know, of the, you know, hundred-and-twenty kindergartens there, you got the forty-eight already enrolled. The eighteen is students from Carl A. FER that's on the waiting list, because we don't have nowhere to put them.
Right.
And that's going to, this is going to eliminate that waiting list, plus open up an additional thirty seats countywide, that will hopefully draw from some of the schools in that particular area that are way overcrowded anyway. And so that's going to help in that, just like the IB program, whenever we get to that. These are pulling students from different schools, even though these are not large numbers. But every student that goes to another school, I mean, the money's the same for the school system, as far as that, it doesn't matter if it goes to this school or that school, whatever, the money's the same either way. And it's just like Ms. Clutz said, we're going to teach the children either way, you know. But now, that's just, you know, my two cents worth. And, you know, and like I've always said, this is a board decision. It's not an individual or an I. Each one of us can have our opinions, strong, mild, or whatever, but it's not an individual decision. It's a board decision. And I'd like to say, Ms. Carpenter, if you have any other concerns, we'll hear those at this time, and then we're going to move on to Mr. Shoemaker, and then we're going to vote, and we'll take on the next item. So if you have further comments, Ms. Carpenter, we'll hear those from you at this time on this splash addition.
Okay. Well, as I mentioned, I'll save the other data, but that, that is one of my concerns. I do have some concerns with IB, but again, I'll, I'll save the other data, but again, I'm concerned with the growth that will be taking place there. Again, we were promised the data. I don't see why we can't wait to receive the data on our school system. And we were promised that data before we said we would expand. And again, we're jumping the gun. And, you know, we're promised one thing, and again, here we are, jumping the gun again. And I just, you know, I, we were promised one thing, and now they're jumping the gun and going on and doing something else. And, you know, I just, you know, we were promised one thing, and now we're doing something else.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Shoemaker?
Well, everyone knows the way I feel about this splash program. My daughter is taught in Europe for, now this is her fifth year, teaching English to Europeans, Spaniards, actually. And that's a part of their school process, from the very lowest level, starting in the premier, prima form, primary years and working on their way up. It's working in many other areas, so it's not like in Cabarrus County, we've come here and reinvented a wheel and started something that's extremely out on the edge. We're not on the edge here. We're, we're following what others have already done successfully. They've created the model for us to follow. They've developed the model for us to follow. And that's, that's a huge thing. So it's not like we're, we're creating a curriculum and a process that, that didn't exist before. Last year, when we voted this in, we put off the Chinese immersion program and said that we would wait till we got the results from the Spanish immersion program. We are not asking for the Chinese immersion program. We're just asking for more seats in the Spanish immersion, because we got, we got eighteen more children that could have been in this program, and we can't put them in the program because we didn't have enough teachers to do it. And now what we're asking for is one and a quarter more classes to be openly enrolled, which is kind of like having a charter school. So we're going to have thirty children in a charter school going over to FER, but it's called a public school, because now the parents are going to, instead of carrying them to some other school, they're going to carry them over to FER, and they're going to drop them off. And they're going to get this wonderful experience in getting immersed in a language that they will carry all the way up until middle school or higher, and then they will have an opportunity to have a third language that they could possibly become proficient at before they leave Cabarrus County Schools. And I think, I think for us to shroud ourselves and say, let's wait for data, we know that we've already got the model that works. We've duplicated what's already out there in the state, that we have got evidence that shows it's working. Why do we have, why is it, why would we be a different, a different fit? So I think we need to go forward with this. I think one of the things that we get out of this program is this parental support, especially from the Hispanic community. Because it's one thing, sometimes they feel like they're really left out of our community. This is an opportunity for us to bring them in and have them a part of us. They can, like you said, that child shows the leadership in the class who's, who's Hispanic, yes. And so now there's a bond that's created that couldn't be created any other way, had we not had this program. We've opened it up and allowed it. And I believe that once we do this open enrollment program, we will see other, other children coming into this program, and it will, and it's not an elitist program. We're not trying to set up an elitist. It's open to anybody and everybody, and that's what we want. We want everyone to have access, open access to this, and bring it forward. And as has been said earlier, all you're doing is reallocating teachers. The VIF is supplying us money for the international teachers, and so we get some, we get some subsidy from them for that, and they're not going to go away. They're, they're a wholesome program, they've been here for thirty years, and it'll be here for many more years. So I believe we've got the funding that we need. I don't think, even though you advertise costs, those costs are more on the textbook side than they are on the teacher's side, because you're going to pay that money for the teachers, no matter what was going to happen. Now, the other piece is, is now we're also shifting from, like Ms. Dr. Van Huglen said last week, we have a high-population area, and that northwest area is a very high population. Right now, we don't have a school going, new school going out there, so we need to start doing whatever we can to lure students into other places so that we can ameliorate that situation until we decide whether we're going to get a school out there, or whether we get a bond, or how, how this new school is going to come to fruition. And even still, I believe that this is the right way for us to go. This is making us a clear choice, rather than just another choice. So, I'll end.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Very well said. Board members, I'd like to call for a motion at this time. Do I have a motion that we approve the Spanish immersion program addition at the Carl A. FER Elementary School?
So moved.
Mr. Harrison makes the motion. Do I have a second?
And I'll second.
Shoemaker seconds it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
No.
Okay. The motion carries six-one, with Ms. Carpenter dissenting. Okay. Dr. Nitrash, you can stay there, again, if you will, because we're going to move on to, and I keep mispronouncing your name. I know it's Natri-
It's Natress.
Natress. It's like the mattress, like mattress. Okay.
It's Dr. Van Huglen. We're here, he would be saying the same thing, so yes.
Yeah, I know. It took me forever to pronounce his name correctly, so I'll get it sooner or later.
It's easier than his. Just keep that in your head.
Okay. Well, let's, let's move on to the elementary IB magnet at Weddington Hills Elementary. I notice we got some staff from Weddington Hills. Thank you all once again for being here. Appreciate your involvement and everything. And so we'll move on into this portion. And as you know, this is another action item. Soon as we do a round of discussion, after you say what you have to say, we'll do a round of discussion, you know, and then we'll go into a vote, and we'll move on. Okay?
Perfect. So, again, last week, Dr. Van Huglen presented the proposal to complete our K-12 IB pipeline. We'd like to open a PYP IB program at Weddington Hills. In order to make that happen, and one of the questions that was posed last week was about the number of PYP programs that are in the state of North Carolina. There are fifteen PYP programs in the state, four of which are in Charlotte. So there are four PYP IB programs-
What is PYP for the audience?
That's the primary years program for the International Baccalaureate Program. So we do have four of those programs in Charlotte-Mc. There are fifteen in North Carolina. So that was one of the key questions that came out of last week's meeting. And with the support of the staff from Weddington that you referenced are here behind me, we recommend that the proposal to open the elementary IB magnet at Weddington Hills be approved as presented.
Okay. You heard it. We'll start on Mr. Shoemaker's side, and we'll come down the board, and we'll finalize our discussion.
This is an exciting opportunity for us. This past Friday, I was over at Concord High School as we worked with them. Well, we got interviewed by the IB, the International Baccalaureate Diploma Team to give us the final approval for diploma program over at Concord High School. And hope, and it seemed to go really well, and hopefully by the end of, in several months, we'll find out whether that's an approved program. And then our students that are in 10th grade at Concord High School can be moving up to 11th and 12th grade and graduate with IB diplomas. The PYP is extremely important feeder and provides a amount of rigor to the way the children think that they won't find anywhere else. IB is well-documented. It's been around for fifty to sixty years, and is, is basically a standard in worldwide. So it's a worldwide standard for education. And countries all over the world are doing this. Actually, I had two parents talk to me individually this, this week. One has a child at Weddington Hills and is really excited, but is kind of disappointed also, because their child won't be able to attend the IB program, but is really looking forward to the opportunity of going to J. and Fries to, to take it on there. The other child is, the other parent is willing to move their child out of an existing charter school and move them over, because this is a program that they really, really want to get their child, children involved with. The, the beauty of a program like this, we're having it at a school that's got sixty-plus percent free and reduced? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not an elitist program, even though a lot of times IB gets gigged for being elitist. It's not an elitist program. It's open to anybody who wants to come. And so that's, that's huge, that we're giving children that would never have the opportunity to access a program like this, this opportunity. And I, and I think that's, that says mountains about where we are as a school district and where we are as a community, because we're trying to bring anybody who wants to participate into this process. This has got good rigor. Janet's team is ready to go. I really believe that it is going to be hard work for them. But when they look at the learning styles and the things that are going to go on with those children, and they're going to see light bulbs go off that they'd never seen go off before, because it's not the same stale old curriculum that you've been teaching. It is something different. And also, guess what? Well, we got Common Core. We're working through that.
I'm trying not to respond.
Yeah. We're working through Common Core. We're getting there. We're, we're rowing that boat, too. I'm sorry. Forgive me. I'm on a roll. You've got me going. But, but there's a language component in IB. So here, we were talking about splash, but there's a language component in the PYP, is there not?
There is.
Okay. So we're going to have children exposed to languages in the PYP process. And by the time, and I asked the, the International Baccalaureate Diploma people, what happens when they get to middle school, high school? Their thought is, they will graduate from that program, from that language, because they're fluent and proficient, and move on to another language like French, or German, or what, whatever is available, I guess, through our, through that program. But they will have the opportunity to learn another language, and they had a special word for it, but I won't try to figure that one out. So, I'm for it. There's just nothing in here that tells me we should not be doing it. And the other thing is, is we're, again, equalizing seats, trying to take the inventory of seats and distribute them as best we can through, through choice of our, of our teachers and our parents, I mean, of our parents. So that's where I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Ms. Carpenter?
Well, one of the concerns, because we talked about it last week, you said you would overcrowd Weddington, and you would have to put modular units out there. Now, don't look at me like that. We talked about this last week. You said it would possibly go to a thousand students, and we'd have to put modulators out there.
Well, we, we've been at eleven-hundred, I believe, Ms. Smith.
Well, yeah, but you said you would have to put modulators out there.
Well, it's a possibility.
And, and I'm not in that. I mean, to me, if you're going to do that, why didn't you put it out at Bethel that has space? I mean, that, that, to me, that school's got space. Now, that, that's, and I'm saying, why did, why would you go overcrow a school when you got a school that, answer me.
I'd be glad to answer that. Bethel is in the southern tip of our county, and to think of children choosing, and families choosing to take their children that far, just does, it's not practical. If you look, I noticed this, this weekend, I don't know if you, there's, there's some construction going on out on Poplar Tent Road. Didn't know what it was. Our new Carolina International School is building, it looks to be a new facility out there on our, out near our place. So more competition in international education is coming to town, and this positions us to be in the right place to capture those children.
Well, I know, but we can't be everything to everybody, and that's what's really bothering me. We are trying to be everything to everybody, and we're not taking care of our own. And this is what's really bothering me. And that's why this forty-two percent of children that are not reading at level, we're not taking care of our own right now. We should be saying we want to be at seventy percent of our children reading at grade level. And we're needing to worry about that, instead of, oh, let's put some more programs in, because there's only fifteen, we got a hundred-and-fifteen systems across the state, and only fifteen of them have elementary IB programs. Fifteen. If this is such a great thing, why aren't the other hundred jumping on board with elementary IB programs?
It is a rigorous process.
That's right.
And through the rigorous process, I think that's where we see the achievement of our reading scores. So-
But a hundred of-
That's going to help us with that process.
I know, but the other hundred are saying, uh-uh. And we're already offering AP courses to our elementary. We're already doing it in the middle and the high school, which is where it really counts. We offer AP, do we not offer AP courses to our elementary schools?
No.
We don't?
No, ma'am.
We don't?
That's high school.
We don't offer any, we don't have AP. I thought we, we don't offer any AP?
No.
AG?
AG?
Yes.
AG. But we do have, we do offer some advanced courses at the elementary level.
Yes, we have an AIG program at the elementary.
Okay, that's what I'm, excuse me, wrong, wrong letter.
Yes.
But we do have, where, if a child is exceptional, we do have some exceptional programs. Excuse me. We do have exceptional programs for those children. But where it really counts, I mean, where colleges look, that is at the middle and the high school. But what I'm saying, there's only 15 of these, you know, if, and we got 100. So, if it's something that's really great, these other, other school systems would have jumped on board. I know that. And so, that's where I've got a problem. And where I'm hitting home again, and I want to bring out all these numbers, and again, I'll hurry up and wrap it up. Our kindergarten rate, and this is average, again, average of our scores, our reading scores of our students that are not reading at grade level, kindergarten, 50.5. First grade, 38.5. Second grade, 35%. Third grade, 36%. Fourth grade, 47%. Fifth grade, 50%. Now, these are children that are not reading at grade level. To me, this should be our first priority before we jump to something else. We should be saying, we want this. You know, to me, this should be one of our big priorities, to say, if we want to be the clear choice, we need to make sure we've got our children reading at these levels before we jump to something else. Now, I know I'm only one board member, but to me, this, reading is the fundamental. Before we can do anything else, we've got to make sure they're reading. They've got to be reading. Now, Mr. Schu just said, well, these are all Hispanic. No, this is an average of everybody. This is, and it says, average score. Doesn't say what, now, I'm going by the statistics I was given. To me, this needs to be, we are doing some things. We can, what can be done. We, one of the things, I know Wyancoff, their scores, they improve tremendously. Is this not correct?
They did.
What makes it different? We have got, one of the big things, they've got a site coordinator with, with communities and schools.
They do.
And did that not help? They were down. That's one of the schools that's got a site coordinator. What's that site coordinator cost? $23,000? Lot difference than 200 and something dollars to put a program in. We could do that in some of our other elementary schools. I mean, this is a lot difference than putting programs in that cost a lot more. But I just, this is something we need to be working on. Okay?
And we agree. And this is one of the ways to do that work. We agree.
And we've got that, those relationships already set up, that, we've got some of our schools that do not have teacher assistance in. I know I'm beating a dead horse. But again, they can serve a lot of teachers. I'll be quiet.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. What she was really trying to say is, it's not Burger King where you have it your own way. We can have it our way, though, in this case, though, Carolyn, because we are in the driver's seat, and we're the ones that decide whether we're going to get left behind or move forward. And if the other 100 school districts want to continue in the direction they're going, that's their business. We're going to continue moving forward. All right, Mr. Kiger, you have any comments?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Schumaker pretty much nailed it for me. And so, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time talking about this specific program. I'm on board. I do want to say I'm very impressed with the presence of the staff and people from Weddington that are here. That, to me, shows that they're that interested to give up an hour or two, really, by the time you get here and get home. It's two, two and a half. You can stay the whole time if you want with us, and make it four. But, no, not five. But that really says a lot about that school. I've been to every school in this district numerous times. I can remember two times when I was at Weddington Hills. And the enthusiasm at that school is absolutely infectious. It is, it is one of the most incredible places to go and to see the teachers interact with students and the, just, for lack of a better term, the vibe at that school is absolutely amazing. And so, I know beyond a shadow of a doubt, they're going to take this program and make it a big success. And as far, you know, Ms. Carpenter, there were a couple of comments I just wanted to make. And I just don't think this is an either-or scenario. I don't think we're doing this at the expense of, well, we've got kids that aren't up to grade level, and we're going to leave them behind. I just think it's something that we can do to enhance what we're doing at that school, bring other kids to it, and not necessarily ignore the statistical analysis that Ms. Carpenter was talking about. And basically, you know, we are kind of responding to the marketplace, you know, that Dr. Shepherd mentioned. And we've said that, and I've used that term since, since I got here, however long ago that was, three years ago now, that that's what we need to be doing. We need to figure out programs and things to engage our students, engage our teachers, engage our parents, to tell them, here's what we do. Your taxpayers are already paying for it. There's no reason to look somewhere else. We're doing it for you. And we've got a way to educate your child and your children the best that we know how to do. So, and one last thing. My mother used to say, as I'm sure lots of yours did too, somebody, everybody's jumping off a bridge, don't jump off the bridge. Well, the flip side of that is, if everybody's not doing something, that's not the reason to not do it. Investigate it, figure out if it works, if it's something you're interested in and want to do, if it makes sense, and here's her influence, if it's not immoral, go ahead and, you know, take the leap of faith, or figure out if it's something that you think you ought to be doing. So, again, that's a long way of saying that I'm with you. I know you guys are going to do a phenomenal job out there, and I'm excited about, hopefully in just a few minutes, being able to pass the proposal and let you take this program. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Mr. Walter, you want to bring your comments?
Sure. Again, as has been said here, we're in competition. So, this is an option for folks. And it has a track record of success, from what I understand. And that's important. You have staff buy-in. I mean, they're here, and that's, they're excited about this program. So, there's a lot to support. I had a few concerns on it, and that being that, again, the population that we're going to get, and the overcrowding of that school, and at some point, having to redistrict and take people away from it, because it's not a school within a school. It's, the entire school will be an IB school. But I guess, again, that the benefits seem to outweigh the concerns I have. I did talk to Dan Meehan about the transportation issue. And the way he explained it to me is, it's adding one additional bus, and that, to operate that bus is $55,000. Not quite sure how that affects us somewhere else, but I understand where you got the number. I appreciate that. And I guess my last concern, again, some people that I'm talking to, a lot of people don't know what IB is, is we're using this acronym IB. Can you explain what the difference of this program is to a typical elementary? What's an additional? What are we going to see? What are the parents going to see, their students?
So, the big framework, this is the Primary Years Program. And they operate under an international-mindedness framework. So, it's really about building international-mindedness into the classroom. And what is great about a program like this is that it is very well-recognized. Students graduate with an IB diploma, which is recognizable, as Mr. Schumaker said earlier, across the world. So, that has a big piece of it. When we start digging into what we're going to see, it's really about seeing inquiry in our classrooms in all areas. So, they operate around six interdisciplinary themes, around who we are is one of them, where we are in place and time, so talking about our place within the world, how we express ourselves, and how the world works, how we organize ourselves in sharing the planet. So, there are components of community service involved. And the big foundation are inquiry-based lessons around these themes. So, what we'll see is a lot of interactivity, a lot of inquiry-based work, similar to what we see in our STEM schools, with this idea of international-mindedness, as well as the community service piece and giving back to our community. So, those are some of the themes that are interwoven within the IB program that will be a great asset to a school where also the ESL population is very high. So, when you think about that same idea of Fur, of helping to bring our community together, this is a great way to do that, because we do have a high ESL population at Weddington as well.
And I appreciate all the work that you all have put into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Okay, Mr. Harrison?
Charter schools eat your hearts out. This is an example of what we got that they ain't got. And it's a good program. And it gets kids in to a rigorous, academically-challenging program early. And it makes a long-term difference in their reading scores and their academic achievements. Let's not, though, of course, seem like we're just winding this up and letting it go. We do need data. We do need updates. We do need reports.
Absolutely.
Periodically and frequently, when it's valid, when it can be pulled together. And to make adjustments as we go along through this. This is a long-term decision. And we need, of course, your continual updating of us with how it's coming along. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Dr. Phillips?
Okay, well, I'm not sure I have too much more to add. But before I say how I feel about this program, I did have, I guess, not so much a question, but just a plea that if we go forward with this, we need a plan on how we're going to address putting more than the 858 students that this plan says our school can handle. And I want to make sure that when we market this program to parents from outside of Weddington, that we make them aware that in the future, as this program grows, their children may be going to class in a modular classroom. I don't want to have them coming back here in two years and saying, you said that this school was underutilized, and so that's why we went there, because we didn't want our children going into modular classrooms at Cox Mill. All right? And now, we have modular classrooms at Weddington. So, I want to make sure that we are open and honest and frank about what might happen. But if you choose to go to a modular classroom, that's a lot different than being told you have to. So, just going to put that there. So, how do I feel about this? Well, in my day job, I'm trying to convince an engineer who's one of the best in the world in his particular subject to come to work for our institute in Charlotte. He doesn't live in the United States. He's going to come here with his wife for a couple of days next month. He's got school-aged children, and one of the things he's already asked me about is, do you have good schools there? And I said, well, if you buy a house in Cabarrus County, I can guarantee you, your children will go to good schools. But I was thinking about the fact that if I could show him an IB program in the elementary schools, and at the middle school level, and at the high school level, that could be the key selling point to getting him here. So, I am in favor of it.
I could see where you would be. You know, I hadn't said a lot more than what I've already said in last week. You know, I think it's a wonderful program. It's the pipeline. It's the missing piece of the puzzle. And you got to keep in mind, you know, and, you know, I don't know what that look is you was talking about, Carolyn, but the overcrowding, you know, the 1,100, you know, and Janet said she's had that many out there before at some point. But nobody really knows. I mean, we got estimates. We've done research. We paid for the study. And based on that, we know that the growth is going to be here. At least it is anticipated. So, even with these students that will come from, you know, around to come to Weddington Hills, they're still, at some point in the next several years, hopefully, the longer the better, but there will have to be a redistricting at some point to move children around when we build these new schools, which we will build some new schools in the next few years. And so, there will be some shifting with students around. And that will have to all be taken into consideration with Weddington Hills as well, and the outlaying boundaries of that district there for Weddington Hills. But anyway, you know, nobody knows what the future holds. All we can do is deal with what we got now, and concluding this pipeline and moving forward with this program, in my opinion, is the right thing to do. And with that being said, I'd like to call for a motion from the board here, that this IB program, the proposed to open an elementary IB magnet at Weddington Hills Elementary School be approved as presented. So, that is on the table.
So moved.
Mr. Kiger makes the motion. Mr. Harrison seconds the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those say no, that's opposed. Okay, the motion carries six one with Ms. Carpenter dissenting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Natress, for being here. I got it right that time. Thank you. Okay, the last item on our open session agenda tonight is the lease of land adjacent to Charles E. Boger Elementary School. We've got Mr. Lynn Wickie here with us tonight, and also, Mr. Scott Wagner. I appreciate your endurance and putting up with us as we jabber about these things, but it's things that have to be, have to be handled. And so, anyway, we'll go ahead and do this discussion. So, when you're ready, Mr. Wickie, we're ready.
Just as clarification, we're actually talking about something for nothing.
And, you know, just to clear the air, Mr. Wagner is here with us. Scott was kind
enough to address the issue of costs and how he saw that overall cost breaking down. And so, we'll get to that in a minute. I just wanted to say that that is the excitement of this project. It's land that has basically been unused for many years. And quite frankly, you know, it's going to take this sort of special effort by an interested group of people, such as the folks that Scott represents. And I think, I'll let you talk about the funding aspects of it. And if you'd like, I can bring up the budget piece at this point, Scott.
If they want to see that, it'd be fine.
Yeah, I'll let you bring that up. Thanks. Should be the last. Yep. That's it. So, we basically, what you're looking at are, so, what we call soft costs. The top portion of that are the working drawings, the development of the designs and the working drawings for those things that will be built. And then, everything below that is the actual anticipated construction costs for putting those things in place. And with that, I'll turn over to you.
Okay. Thanks again for inviting me twice in one month. I'm honored. But again, the object of this is to do something for the school system that will not cost the school system and have it funded entirely by the public, or private, I'm sorry. This is a soft cost estimate that you do see. And as I mentioned before, I've been involved with building like 16 different soccer fields in the county, so I've got a lot of experience in raising funds and doing things proactively. We are able to probably get a lot of this cost reduced simply by using our connections. People wanting to do stuff for the kids, for the community, at either no cost or significantly reduced. When I first brought this budget to Mr. Wickie, he felt it was right in line with what he thought it would cost based on our concept drawing. So, that's, you know, we were pretty comfortable with that. As far as raising the funds, obviously, there's no guarantees. But like Mr. Wickie said, Boger Elementary was built seven years ago, and this field has been sitting dormant, basically, since then. It's being mowed, so it looks respectable. But it's, you know, it's, it's just sitting there without being utilized. And we've got a K-12 campus right there that is really underserved with athletic facilities. And this is, you know, a prime piece of property to do something with and make it valuable to the students. So, that basically was the proposal. I have submitted a marketing plan to, actually, the marketing teacher at Northwest. I reached out to her earlier this week, or last week, and asked if she thought the kids would be interested in being involved as a, either extra project or extra credit, or just something to do for fun where you can have something tangible instead of just, you know, bookwork, paperwork. And she was extremely excited about it. When I submitted the marketing plan to her, she was even more excited. So, we're sitting down next week, actually, and talking about it. If she's comfortable with it, and I'm comfortable with it, we're going to go to Mr. Jolly and see if we can get it approved by him to allow the students in their extra time, their spare time, to get involved if they'd like to. Right now, my plan is to put a team of 50 people together to make this happen. And I just did the initial ask-around, I guess I'll call it, last week, because I don't want to cry wolf until this thing gets fully approved. I've already got 20 people, parents in the community, people that have been involved with kids in the community that were, are interested in being involved and helping make this happen. So, we've got our game plan. So we've got our game plan, we've got a high interest level without even really soliciting an interest level, and it's just a matter of getting everybody organized, getting the steps documented, and start executing. So we really think we can make it happen. There's no guarantees in life, but hey, unless you try, you don't know.
I certainly agree. Okay, we'll open it up for final board discussion, and we'll start on Dr. Phillips' side.
And Mr. Chair, if I could make one comment. Last week, at Ms. Carpenter's suggestion, we were going to add a provision on policies. I realize, in looking at the one that's here in your materials, it does not have the paragraph 10 I added, but it's short, and the final agreement will have this provision that says, "Tenet shall comply with all of landlord's policies, including without limitation, policy 5022, registered sex offenders, and policy 5240, advertising in schools." So I drafted that, but that just doesn't, it's not in this version here. I think that came after. Yeah. But that will be in the final version. I wanted you to know that. No.
Okay. Lynn, when a booster group raises money for a project that would be at a school, we typically say, "Okay, you have to give the money to the schools," and then the school builds it to the school specifications. But in this case, since we're leasing the land, will the volunteer, the nonprofit be responsible? Will it be their construction project, or are we still going to be running the construction? The "we" being the school still running the construction project?
I envision this would be similar to the way we've coordinated things with Clash. Whenever they have a project, they bring it to us to review and approve in that regard, but they're responsible to pull the building permits, obviously, get whatever drawings they need, pull the building permits, and have the work done. We have the oversight responsibility to make sure that it's, you know, built per our standards, but they are responsible for actually getting the work done.
Okay, so that would mean that if, for instance, there's a contract for grading or whatever, it would be a contract between the grader and Northwest Sports Association, not Cabarrus County Schools?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Harrison?
And this is just an open question. It doesn't have any agenda behind it. In a $1.2 million construction projected cost sheet, the contract indicates that there's a $5,000 escrow amount that will be provided. Is that enough? Is that okay? Is that... I mean, I don't know what the standard is. I have no idea what the rationale is for that $5,000. I'm not saying it should be higher. Maybe it should be a penny. I don't know. Is that enough? Is that adequate for the circumstances?
In my view, it obviously is. It obviously wouldn't be enough to finish, you know, the work. And I talked to Mr. Wickie, we were trying to come up with a number. I think our thought was, we needed, we wanted some money in case things just stop, and we need to come in and, you know, control erosion or do something else from a safety perspective. I think that's really what the $5,000 is for. It won't let you finish the project, but we're also cognizant of the fact that we're essentially being given this project. So I don't think it's reasonable to ask them to escrow hundreds of thousands of dollars when they're trying to raise the money for the project. So it's a balance, and should it, could it be 10 instead of 5? Absolutely. I think there's just some judgment. The idea is some money that's there so that if things get left abruptly or there's some other issue, I think that was really the intention of that amount, not to complete it, but perhaps come in and do maintenance or, you know, fencing or protective measures. The idea is there's some money there so that we're not just left with an immediate expense. But that's, it's an arbitrary number, and if the board wants to say it should be 10 or 20, I mean, I think that's potentially something subject to negotiation. Different people could come up with numbers. That's just a number, Mr. Wickie, and I felt was a number to give you some money without putting an undue burden on folks that are trying to build something for us.
And is your association bonded and/or have we specified in our contractual language here that the subcontracting companies also must be bonded?
Well, I think that's a requirement with the school system.
Okay.
And my vision is, Mr. Wickie and myself and our team will be connected at the hip through every step of construction. And as far as the organization being bonded, if that's a requirement, we definitely will be. I mean, we're getting it set up. It's in the attorney's hands right now, setting it up, so.
Who has ultimate authority on the decision to, one of your items here is bricklaying. Who has final sign-off on actually doing the construction in each phase of...
Well, right now, I am identified as the president, so I would say myself. Mr. Jolly and Mr. Adams are both part of the board that we're setting up for this LLC, nonprofit LLC. But again, as far as the design and approvals and everything, Mr. Wickie and myself will be connected at the hip.
Day-to-day.
Yep.
I would just add, you know, the work that will be done will be, it will be inspected by the city of Kannapolis or county, depending on what the trade is. As I said, we're going to have our hand in it in terms of reviewing the documents. In terms of the construction, we will be on the site looking it over, but if we find problems with that, we're going to be going back to Scott and talking about that as our relationship is defined.
And per se, do we need any prior approval also with the city of Kannapolis and/or the county of Cabarrus? Or is this just a consultative arrangement that you're referring to there? Do we need any formal approval from those?
Sure. Yes.
So this, after this contractual arrangement is pinned down by us, it is up for review by this, by Kannapolis and the county?
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Harrison.
My fault if I was not clear. I apologize.
I was referring to the construction piece of it. That's what you first raised, and I was just saying that they have building requirements and review processes that we have to, you know, that Mr. Wagner and his staff will have to go through, the same as he would have to with county for certain pieces of that as well.
Correct. That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter?
Couple questions. Now, this is, you're going to try to raise the full funds before you start the project? You've got a very aggressive timetable on it, or you can start certain areas with one...
What I'd like to do is do it in phases, to be honest with you, because you can get things approved easier, have less requirements on your construction if you do it in phases, especially erosion control and runoff.
Okay. Mark, are we protected if something happens with a contractor? Is she just...
You mean, from, like, from a liability standpoint?
Liability, yes.
I mean, typically, if they're going to enter into the contract with that contractor, that would be subject to the terms of their contract. I mean, almost all of those would require insurance, for example, to cover the building site. So we are requiring in this lease, there is an insurance provision, so they've got to, as the tenant, they've got to provide insurance that would be the protection to us. But in terms of an injury of a contractor or something, that would typically be covered by the contractor.
Or just a performance under the contract.
Well, yeah.
You know, we're working so closely with them if something doesn't get done.
Yeah, the legal contractual relationship really is going to be directly between this group and the contractor. In other words, they will not sign a contract with Cabarrus. We're not responsible for payment. It's really, that's a relationship between them and the contractor. And we aren't covered in the sense, I mean, if they, they probably will require that that contractor be bonded or something else in case the contractor defaults, but we don't have, we don't have a direct remedy if the construction gets stopped or there's a problem. That's really something between them. We do have a completion date in the lease, so if they don't finish the facility as outlined by that January 1st, 2015 date, we can then terminate the lease.
Yeah, I mean, that does seem pretty aggressive timetable to have it done in a year, but that's what you think you can do? That's okay. The other question I had was, Mr. Wickie, was the portable, is it, that area with that, with that, are we, if we had to expand and put portables over at Boger, would we need that area or any part of that area for portables or any of that?
No, I should have brought the plan with, but because of the requirement to be within 200 feet of the, of the school restroom facility, it's too far away. We have to be on the other side of the school, you know, to meet that requirement.
Okay, so it doesn't affect any of that, in the school, our uses of this? Okay. Those are my questions. I appreciate you trying to make a difference over there.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Kiger?
I don't have anything else to add. Thank you for being here, and we certainly hope the project goes well and that your fundraising goes well, and I know that Mr. Wickie will be keeping a sharp eye.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Carpenter, you have any comments?
Well, y'all know I like anything free. That is something I like. And again, I hope that all the endeavors are done, and as I told you last week, I bleed orange and black, so I do hope everything goes very well. And my questions, our attorney did answer, that he will put those additions into the contract, and so that was my only question.
Thank you.
Okay, that was simple, Ms. Carpenter. Thank you, and Mr. Schumaker? Okay, Mr. Schumaker, you have your comments.
Yes. Scott, you said that you're going to do this in phases. Now, the lease contract says that the completion, the facility will be complete, and so you, now we've got a cost estimate for, you know, a whole facility.
Right.
Rather than just the fields, even though the rendition shows the picture of it. Were you conceptually working on phasing it in, say, like, getting the grading on the field first and then maybe doing sewer and water, and then eventually the building as you raised funds so that you could kind of piecemeal the, and have beneficial use of the fields for a while?
Actually, what, my thoughts were, we'd get the buildings done first, followed by the stands, and then work on the fields.
Okay. Because, you know, January 1st, 2015 isn't very far away.
No.
And one thing that I did see in here is, all right, you get started on the process, we don't have a check-in piece in the, because as you get close to the January 15th date, it would be better for this board to know in the summer going in how you're doing on your construction and how the contract's working, rather than getting up to January 15th and then, you know, and we don't know who will be on the board then because we'll have gone through another election, and so we don't know what our dynamics will be or and what else could happen with the economy. But I would hate for you to be in the middle of it and then we're not in touch with exactly where you're headed and whether you're able to execute the date. So I asked for, respond to me.
No, I mean, that's exactly, I mean, that's exactly what we should be doing. I think maybe every six months or something, we can come and present exactly where we stand, you know, where we're going, and just keep everybody updated.
Yeah, I would think something like in June and then at the end of the second quarter of 2014 and then the end of the third quarter.
It'll be done by then.
Be something like that, but I didn't know if you needed to have something in the contract, because again, it's protection for them as much as it is protection for us.
But we're not reviewing the contract. We're always talking about the lease of the...
Well, that's what I'm talking about, the lease.
Okay.
I'm talking about responding to us so that we don't go off the deep end on January 15th and get legalistic on the...
I misunderstood. I thought you were talking about the contract. They hold the contract. All we've going to have is the lease.
Well, yeah, I'm using leasing contract as a, they're saying, but, okay. So I'll try to use the word lease. In the lease, we don't call for any bonding, but you will bond everybody who comes on the property.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. They have to be licensed and bonded. I mean, that's a requirement.
And you'll have a bond in hand before they start work.
Oh, yeah.
To protect you.
Absolutely.
And that protects us eventually.
Absolutely.
Okay. And the only other thing that I have, and it's more of a fairness thing, if it takes you to January the 15, January 2015, just to get access to the fields, then you've lost over a year of this particular lease. So you really haven't had, you've had no beneficial occupancy for an over a year. It's like leasing a car and not using it for the first year and a half that you own it or that you're leasing it. I would submit that perhaps we should change that language just a little bit, that the lease, the five-year lease would begin on the completion of, and you pick the phase, but that way, at least it gives you time to raise some money, because you've got to raise a million bucks, and execute some construction and get bids and things like that, and you're going to wheel away a lot of time in that process. So I don't know, Mark, how you might, how you might take care of something like that, but I just don't think it's right that they're going to go into this lease with a four-year beneficial occupancy rather than a five-year if we're going to, if they're going to put this kind of money down. And then we've got the option to renew the lease for another five years, and if we want, at the time we don't know where our board's going to be, but they could pull the plug on you. And that's just, to me, I don't want to put a board in a position where they could do that, especially after a good faith effort like this.
Well, Mr. Kiger just mentioned to me, you know, it might be something that we could consider, would just maybe do a six-year lease, you know, if that's something if you'd entertain, you know, that would give you one-year construction time and then full five years. I mean, I wouldn't oppose that, you know.
Well, the point being, we have to sign the agreement and lease you the property to have you, let you have access to it, to put the structure on it.
Right.
So then you have lost a year, as Mr. Schumaker said, so if we make the total six, where you get a year to build and five to use it, I'm okay if that's the way the board wants to go. I think that's a good point, Mr. Schumaker.
Yeah, and I can say I could go along with that and, you know, and if anyone else has any comments on that, does everybody...
Mr. Wickie, you have a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to suggest, if Mr. Wagner's in agreement, I don't have any problem with the six years. What I would suggest is that after a 12-month period, we do have a formal review of the project and the status of it, and then that voter or acknowledgement by the board allows the next five-year part of the lease to kick in. So at least there is a good faith effort, of course, but we need to see some progress. Whether or not everything can be achieved in that time depends on many, many factors, but at least the board would then have an opportunity to say, "Yes, we like the way this is going. Let's, in effect, bring out the second phase of the lease." Does that make sense?
Yeah, although I think to do that, you'd probably want to come back and then do a term extension, add a year. After you see some progress, you could then come back to the board and say, "All right, these are the fields, and we're now going to extend the term an additional year," essentially in recognition of where you are. Or if things, or if we're getting close to the 2015 and the whole facility's not done, the board may say, "Well, you know, we'll make a different change, or we'll do another review date when it is done and decide." So you've got the ability to amend the lease, and I think it probably, so they can get started, it may make the most sense to go ahead and approve the lease presented, but with the idea that when it's done, I think you've heard from the board, they're willing to give a full five-year term once you, once we see the work and it's done. So I think it'd be appropriate to come back at that point and say, "Now I'd like, you know, I'd like to add whatever time it took me to build it to the lease, so I get that five years." And I think the board seems willing to do that amendment.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And that sounds good to me, too. I think that there's a way you could incorporate that, Mark. That would be good. And one comment that I have, and that is, on the term of the lease, is it not typical that the leasing and the lessor advise the other or they want to renew or discontinue or whatever? And that needs to be a part in this, I believe, because I didn't see anywhere in that on the term where it says that 60 days, 90 days, we'll notify them that we're interested. I mean, it does say that, that we'll offer them five years additional if they need it, or, I mean, we'll offer it to them, but it doesn't say any specified amount of time. Whereas what I'm trying to say is, I don't want to see future boards look at this lease and say, "Why didn't we put a 90-day clause in there? Who's going to let who know what they're going to do in 90 days?"
Okay.
So we won't wait till the very last day and say, "Oh, well, I want to renew my lease," or, "Oh, well, guess what? We don't want to renew it," you know? So there needs to be some type of a clause in there for that. And is that something that the board can go along with?
I think so. I think it's a little bit difficult to read. The leasing may periodically exercise options to extend the term. What exactly does that mean?
I think, well, I think those are both good suggestions. What we should have is language that either party, I think, the way I would typically draft it is actually automatic renewal, but either party can give 90 days notice of termination, and that way either party could say, "We're done," and you just give 90 days notice, otherwise you get a renewal. That would be more typical language, and that way, if everything's going smoothly and no one acts it, it renews, but either side can give notice. You know, and really, an option, too, would be to do that, but have it renew on an annual basis rather than a five-year basis would be a little more. So if you just continue on after the five-year term, it'd just be year to year, but either party could give 90 days notice that we're going to end the lease.
All I'm trying to do is keep each other from being in the dark.
I think that's a good...
And whatever the legal language for that is, is what we need to incorporate.
I'll make that change.
Mr. Chairman, and I guess this is for Mark, the only problem, if I'm Mr. Wagner, that clause needs to say after the initial five-year period of time, because I'm not going into this thinking, "Wait, any time in 90 days, you're going to tell me to hit the road."
No, absolutely. No, it's clear the initial term is five years.
Okay.
It would be a...
I think Mr. Schu is correct that whatever the language is after that period of time of at least giving each party reasonable notice... is after that period of time, of at least giving each party reasonable notice of what their intention is moving forward. So, however we want to nail that down, I think is fine.
Yeah, that's right, and that's before the end of the lease, within 90 days before the end of the lease, not two years after, you know, we've negotiated the lease, 90 days before the lease expires. Somebody will know what somebody's doing. Okay, Dr. Shepherd, you had a comment?
Just to say that last week, when Mr. Wagner presented that picture to us, he piqued my interest when he had the band instrument over the old parking lot, so I just wanted to clarify, I had a couple of conversations this week. The area we're talking about developing is currently the band practice field. I mean, that is where, that is the only space that they're provided by the school to practice. So I think, not related to the lease, but related to the board's intention with your motion, I would like to have a clear understanding that, in terms of the school's use of this property, this is where these kids are given to practice now. So if this space is not devoted to practice for their facility during the 2:00 to 6:00 commitment on the time, they won't have anywhere to practice. The parking lot's not acceptable, you're right, it's on an incline, I did it for years, so, or a year, it felt like many years, with that, as you said, things rolling to the back of the field. So just ask that the boards will be stated that we will devote this space during our portion of it for band rehearsal space, unless there's adequate space provided elsewhere, they're not on the football field now, because the athletic department pays the maintenance for our football field, so they're not, they're not using that, and the other field is devoted to football practice, so I don't want to leave them out in the cold.
Well, two things, one is that the, there will be two full-size fields there, okay, and right now, we can get by with one for sports, so that leaves the other one for whatever.
So you could hold practice at the same time they're holding practice?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, and the only other point, the lease does say that until 5:45, Northwest Cabarrus High School, Middle School, and Bogart Elementary maintain priority use of the facility. So in terms of band or other stuff, we've got a priority use. Now, obviously, during construction, I mean, there may be issues while they're working on that, but...
No, but you have this beautiful soccer field sitting there, so you've got the soccer team that wants to practice on that, you've got the football field where the football team wants to practice, you've got the stadium that can't be used because it's of maintenance, so suddenly you have kids that, I mean, this is one of the best bands in southeast, that needs a place to practice, and they haven't got a place to practice. So I just want to make sure that they're taken care of as well. This is beautiful, and I, I'm bringing it to you as a recommendation tonight.
So we have the principals are on this board, right? Is that, both principals are on the board, on your board? Or will be?
Uh, right now, just Mr. Jolly.
Okay.
Once we get it approved, we will be meeting with Mr. Ferrera, and also Ms. Pfeiffer at Bogart.
Should another representative of the school be on the board as well, or is it, would that make...
So you've got Mr. Adams?
Yes.
You have the athletic director and the principal, then let me just ask that you add to that board the band director.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, board members, are there any further discussion on this item?
Do we need to make a motion on this?
Yes, we do, and I was getting ready to call the motion. The motion is that Cabarrus County Schools leased the land adjacent to Charles E. Bogart Elementary School to Northwest Sports Association for a period of five years to be approved as presented. Do I have a motion?
I was wondering if I could revise that and make a motion to add, just to add the six-year term to it, so that we just, I mean, that's all we have to do, right?
Well, I was thinking that Mark said we'd leave it like it was, and then, then there need to be a clause in there, Mark, where we can amend it at some time?
You have two, I mean, on the term issue, I do think there are two possible approaches. One approach is to make it a six-year term right now. I think the other approach we had talked about is, let's see how construction progresses, and then after a year, decide if we want to extend it another term, so you can see what progress has been made. But I think either approach is okay. You can do six years, because you've still got a requirement that it be done by January, otherwise you can terminate the lease. So if you're not happy with progress by January 1 of 2015, you can simply terminate it or renegotiate the lease term. So, I think I'm okay, I think, but I think Mr. Wiki's suggestion was, let's, rather than give the full six years now, let's see what progress we get, and maybe add a year later, a year from now. The other option is to add it now, I think that's where, so you could make your motion, that's one option, is to just do a six-year term.
I was going to say, why don't we, I move that we go forward with the motion as you stated it, and then you can amend it after we put it on the table.
I don't know if we need to, it's typically, it's a 10-year lease, if they exercise an option, it's 10 years, so that extra year really doesn't make much difference unless you're looking for a 10-year lease.
As long as we have flexibility at whatever phase we need it, do we need to make that decision now, whether it's six or, I mean, as long as the contractual or lease language allows us to cross that bridge later on, do we need to make the determination now?
Well, I think it's clear, you know, it's very clear that money has been spent, the intentions are there, with full anticipation that the goals will be met, and I fully understand where Mr. Schumaker's at about adding another year, because that way you would get full five-year benefit, and eliminate the one-year construction time. So, I mean, what I would rather do now, and this is just my opinion, I'm along with Mr. Schumaker, I'd rather just go ahead and make it a six-year lease, if you're agreeable with that, and then if, for whatever reason, you know, either of us can come up and say, well, you know, I'm sure this is, it's probably not going to be us, it'll probably be you, because you wasn't able to do what you planned on doing, because, I mean, let's face it, the land is laying there, it's not being used, you know, you're willing to do all of this work, you know, that the school system's going to benefit for years to come, to, for us, for free, and so, you know, I don't see no problem at all in changing it from five years to six years, and just amend the lease to add that, and move forward with it. And that's sort of where I'm at, and whichever, but I can say, it's not a...
We have a motion on the table, I believe, from Dr. Phillips, and...
No, no, that's right, yeah, okay.
So I've moved the motion as it's written here, and if there's a second, then we can have an amendment.
I'll second that, and I guess I'm of the opinion, Mark said he thinks we're better off just leaving it alone and addressing that later, so, you know, it's probably six one, a half does another, I'm going to take legal counsel and say, if he thinks that's the best way for us to go, then I'm okay with that. So I'll second Jeff's motion, which is the motion you, that's as presented.
Okay, and that's no problem, I'd go either way myself, you know, because it's a great project, and I'm looking forward to seeing you get some dirt moving out there and getting something going. And so what we'll do then is, we have a motion, and we have a second to approve the lease of the land adjacent to Charles E. Bogart Elementary School to Northwest Sports Association for a period of five years, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Scott, you can go to work now, brother.
Thank you very much.
You can go to work.
I got my shovel in the back.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we've got, it's time for us now to convene into closed session, and this is pursuant to General Statutes 143-318-11A3, and also 143-318-11A5, and 143-318-11A6. And do I have a motion that we convene in closed session?
So moved.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Okay, I wanted to say goodnight, ladies and gentlemen, and hope you have a good holiday season coming up, Thanksgiving coming up, enjoy your time with your family, and we'll see you back in December. Goodnight.